All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. It is Monday, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four at six P M. In the Susan Tully Livesley Boardroom of the eighteen eighty seven building. I'd like to start out the meeting by saying.
Attention to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Tron, should I have you do the roll call?
Sure.
You're here.
Sure.
Okay.
Mister Andre.
Here.
Mister Gayheart.
Here.
Eric Gordon.
Yes.
This is this is Ingersoll.
Here.
This is Kostak.
Here.
This is Reckles.
Here.
Mister Scarrow.
Here.
All right, we do have a forum. I should note that Mister Talon is on the meeting, he's virtual with us tonight. And we'll go ahead and get, oh, we don't have any community participation tonight, I didn't receive any cards filled out or anything, so we'll skip that agenda item. So we'll go ahead and start with the school board meeting minutes from June tenth. Anybody who has any questions or amendments to it, otherwise looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes of June tenth, twenty twenty four regular session, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the June tenth, twenty twenty four regular session, school board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, moving on to general fund and other bills. Mister Tron, do you have?
Yep, the general other fund bills this evening's covers checks number one five two four three two through one five two five five zero. Wire transfers, oh, seven six to oh, seven seven, and A C H numbers eight five four to eight eight one, the combined amount of seven hundred forty four thousand five hundred fifty one dollars and ten cents. You may have noticed in this bill listings, there are a number of private school. And we do that at the end of the year, we verify distance and attendance, I think there are sixty five contracts this year, so we do two Prokial schools in Delvin, one in Spain, and one in Lake Geneva. So those are all included in there, so. And then I provided a memo, some additional information, and then a copy of the Treasury's report to the month of May. Is it the end of the bill listing?
Any questions from Mister Tron? I just had a couple, if nobody else has anything. The, on the probable voucher questions, there was one on there that Casenix Limited replacing the warming units for the middle school kitchen, is that part of the maintenance budget, or is that part of the summer?
Part of the food service budget, so what what we're finding is that, you know, all the equipment in the kitchen, that was twenty two years old.
Yeah.
So we're starting to begin to replace some of that. We've also had some problems with the freezer and cooler, so you're gonna see some maintenance bills on there as well, so.
Sure. Sure.
It's all original equipment, otherwise, it's part of the middle school, so it's in the kitchen.
Yeah, yeah, so. But those, these are things that we've planned for in the budget to.
We, we try to replace some equipment every year, a lot of times it's a dishwasher, but we didn't do that this year, so this became
Okay. Okay.
value, yeah.
Okay. And then the lead recreation, the rubber infill for the Jackson and Tivitts playgrounders, was that funded through fundraising?
We just, we used our maintenance budget for that, so every so many years with that rubber kind of either decomposes or it just kind of gets spread out, so from a safety standpoint, we always have to replenish, so. The two schools we did was the kindergarten playground here at Jackson, and then the, the main playground at Tivitts.
Okay. And then one more, just because I'm curious. We put up some fencing at the high school for C O two tanks?
Yeah, those were tanks that used to be stored in the, in the basement, in the boiler room of the pool, if you've ever been in it, there's an actual boiler room in the pool. And they were so corroded that they said they needed to get replaced, and you're much better off getting out of that environment.
Okay.
So then the fencing was to cover up those tanks.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, that was all I had. If there are no other questions, then looking for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, check numbers one five two four three two to one five two five five zero, wire numbers zero seven six to zero seven seven, and A C H eight five four to eight eight one. In the combined amount of seven hundred forty four thousand five hundred fifty one dollars and ten cents as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the general and other fund bills of June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, check numbers one five two four three two to one five two five five zero. Wire number zero seven six to zero seven seven, and A C H eight five four to eight eight one, in the combined amount of seven hundred forty four thousand five hundred fifty one dollars and ten cents. Roll call vote, please.
Mister Andre.
Yes.
Mister Gayheart.
Yes.
Eric Gordon.
Yes.
This is Ingersoll.
Yes.
This is Kostak.
Yes.
This is Reckles.
Yes.
Mister Scarrow.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next item is the O P E D funding proposal.
This is the third time that we brought to the board to use some of the O P E D funds that we had set aside in Fund seventy three to pay what is a benefit for a phase out group of employees under the old O P E D obligations, so we have about twelve people that remain in that. So we've had monies that we've set aside through the budget process over the years since two thousand and six. And builds up to about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, so a couple of years ago, as that liability's going down, maybe I speak out that we should start using those funds, because they need to be used for that purpose. And what we've done as part of that then is we continue to budget each year for what we call the pay as you go, so the yearly obligations. So that balance then has become part of our fund balance to kind of build that up a little bit as we were kind of looking at a fiscal cliff over the next few years, so this would be the third year that this has come to the board in terms of using some of those funds for that purpose.
So by using these funds, we've got enough, we've already budgeted elsewhere to cover the obligations that we have to those twelve.
Yes. So, so what we do is we build into the budget between a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand every year for the pay as you go.
Yeah.
So for the last two years, we haven't had to use that, the pending board actually wouldn't get this year, but it's built into next year's budget as well.
Okay.
So once we run out of these funds, we wouldn't be using the district resources until the inherent liability is exhausted.
Sure. Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
John, lots of notes, because it's a great explanation. I didn't know where to even formulate the question. Thank you.
I mostly asked a question, because I knew there were people who didn't really understand what it was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I know we talk about this a little bit, and we do one of our budget needs.
There's some vague recollection of that, and it was a tenant, right, right, so thank you both for.
Yeah.
Right.
So there's, there's two links in that.
Yeah.
In the presentation, and it really go in depth.
Yes. Right, right. Right, but it's still having that base to start from.
Right.
Yeah. Yep.
So the, the total transfer is going to be?
A hundred fifty seven thousand two hundred fifty. Yeah. There isn't a timeline that we're required to use these funds, right?
Um, to get it recorded in the current year budget, it needs to happen before the end of July.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's why it comes in June.
Got it. And why, why are we leaving fifty one thousand dollars in there?
Because we could do the same thing next year with the balance.
Okay, in the meantime earning interest and other things, okay, so.
Correct.
Okay. That's a little bit sense. All right, so looking for a
Okay.
Motion, yes. I move to approve the use of Fund seventy three O P E D funds for the twenty twenty three, twenty four pay as you go retiree health insurance obligations as presented. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the use of Fund seventy three O P E D funds for the twenty twenty three, twenty four pay as you go retiree health insurance obligations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, motion passes. First rea-, or second reading, excuse me, of the twenty twenty four, twenty five preliminary district budget. You're a busy man tonight.
This thing is very touchy, I don't know why. Okay, yeah, this is the second reading for the preliminary, uh, two thousand twenty four, twenty five district budget. I, I won't read this line, I mean, we went through a little bit at the last meeting, but certainly if there are questions that the board would like to go through. As part of the highlights, included the state budget perimeters, which is what we're operating, we're in the middle of that two year biennium, so you pretty much know a lot of the perimeters at the state level, so that's helpful in terms of putting our budget together. In terms of enrollment, we, we budgeted for additional students through open enrollment, and then probably through the Options Program and C C A might be the areas, but we, we see open enrollment at all of our buildings, so it could be in any one of our facilities. And then we're assuming the resident enrollment has been pretty flat for the last few years, so we just assume that that will continue. So that, those were the estimates. We have a number of budget reductions, including areas in transportation, support services, instructional staff. We, we have a small increase in consumable fees, we're looking at freezing what I'll call our supply and equipment budgets for next year. Utilities is an area, we're trying to get some efficiencies there. We had some one time expenditures for the lacrosse program, so that was only ended for this year.
Yeah.
The additional, the, the open enrollment, and, and quite honestly, we're, we still have staff adjustments to consider.
Sure.
In probably a couple of areas, one is we're hiring staff to replace those positions where people either retired, or they left us. We're finding that we're hiring people at a, probably at a lower compensation.
Yeah.
So we're keeping track of that. And then as we're looking at staffing, there's several positions I think we're still looking at, do we fill those or not? So based upon our preliminary budget, that I don't, I, I feel pretty confident saying certainly we reached there one point two five
Okay.
in terms of reductions overall.
Okay.
Um, I think we're, we're pretty much there.
Okay.
Staffing, we are looking at some additional staffing. Transfer service for special ads, so that would be an aid position, and additional special at, at the high school. And then additional position for college and career academy, and then the options program. The one thing I included in this printout that I didn't have in the last meeting was the impact of Wisconsin Act twenty. Which is the
Right, the reading.
The reading literacy piece, so there's a cost to our school district, because we have a CISA program that training to CISA six, and that's twenty five thousand eight hundred dollars. And the state did not provide funding for that component.
Yeah, I remember that was one of the big compositions.
General highlights, we included for cost of living, four point one two for her, her, her increase for her employee groups last year, you recall, or actually, this year. It was, it was one point four, one point five for most of our employee groups, and administrations were frozen. We're assuming health insurance would go up four percent with our self-funded plan, we'll have to wait several months yet to get a better feel for that, but we're hopeful, I guess, at this point. We do have an imbalance with our operating budget, about three point four million dollars between revenues and expenses. State equalization aid is an estimate at this time, we will get a number from the state on July first, because we're required to provide school districts with an estimate. And typically, the media will grab a hold of that, and then, you know, say, well, you know, what are you gonna do with the additional money, or how are you gonna make that up if you have less, and as you know, it's part of the revenue cap calculation, so overall revenues would be the same, it's just it wouldn't come from the source of state aids, it would be the levy or vice versa.
And weren't we kind of, or isn't the state kind of trying to wait to see what happens with N P S before they can give those numbers?
They're required by state statute to give us estimates, so they're gonna have to do that based on best information they have, whatever that means.
Okay. Right. Right, yeah.
So, you know, everyone's kind of talking about, you know, that's a discussion right now, and certainly, you know, it could impact all districts one way or the other, but the reality is, we won't know until October fifteenth, what our state aids are. And that's the same every year, it's just a question of how accurate with the July one, this year, with all that's going on in N P S, so. We are looking at, you know, a levy adjustment about two point four eight percent, but then we're assuming that, you know, overall growth and actual I guess tax base, we're using conservative at two percent, so it's a modest increase in terms of the actual tax rate as a result of that. I put together here, you know, kind of the projection relative to how that looks next year in terms of revenue cap, building the transfer service. And at this point, I made no assumptions in terms of any kind of referendum planning, so that has not been built in, since the board hasn't taken any action yet.
So, final line. This, this budget is showing what it would be without the referendum.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Ultimately, if the board decides to go forward with the referendum questions come October, you will approve two budgets to two levies, and one being a successful referendum and one not. And then the, whatever happens in November will dictate the final.
And then, do we have anything on here that shows if the referendum passes, where we'll be?
Yeah, I have an estimate in there, so. First of all, debt service, we know we're gonna have some savings there, because we've paid off some of our debt, so about a half a million dollars in interest payments, and then about three point eight actual debt payments over the next five or six years. And then, I think that, I put a chart at the very end. So the, this gray represents the proposed, that represents this year's budget. So the tax levy this year is twenty two million three hundred seventy nine thousand four oh two.
Yeah.
What you see in gold is this proposed budget, which does not include an operational referendum.
Okay.
And then, what I put in the purple then is if you add in an operational refer, based on the recommendation from the ad hoc committee, the increase in, and the levy is a little over five percent. And the impact in the mill rate with a two percent valuation is twenty five cents per thousand. So on a hundred thousand dollar home, that would be twenty five dollars the first year.
Okay.
So.
So on an average, three hundred thousand dollar home.
Seventy five, correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll update that as we get more information, but that's the estimate that we've been using to date, so. It's quite a bit different than the last one, right? Yes.
It's significantly different.
Yeah. That was on a hundred thousand dollar home, that was like over two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Hundred thousand dollars in property value, because people get their feathers ruffled when you say a hundred thousand. Since they don't exist.
We, we can hear you, Jason, but, but hardly, just to let you know.
All right, we just say a hundred thousand dollars of property value. And that way, people don't get their feathers ruffled that they can't buy a home for a hundred thousand anymore.
Right.
Yeah, they don't exist, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's great, we thank you both.
And then a lot of the funds here, I think we kind of walked through all of that at the last meeting, we'll adjust with the personnel piece of the budget, which is seventy five percent of our budget, we build in at this point percent adjustments, but once we have finished our staffing and the onboarding, and every employee makes their selections for benefits, we'll do a snapshot of the actual September, and that's what we'll use to build our untold budget, so.
I, I've been asked by employees, if the referendum does not pass, is that going to mean that we take away the salary increase? And I hope I'm speaking correctly, but the answer is no.
Correct, because you've already agreed to that contract.
Yeah, that's what I thought, we've already signed the contracts, and yeah.
Correct.
That'd be real messed up.
Yeah.
We'd have to have big sales.
So, so the November referendum, that date is the absolute last date that we can affect this year's budget.
Yes.
So, um, yeah, well, it is, you just mentioned, we've already made our commitments, basically.
Right, yeah, and that's what I said, I'm like, we're not changing what, yeah, we committed to, so. Uh, so yeah, looking for a motion to approve the preliminary.
I had a question, because I thought, unless I missed, heard something, I thought we had three readings on this, and then it went to.
Uh-uh, no, there's only, only two.
Okay. July one is when it goes.
Yeah, and, and by policy, we always have at least a preliminary budget in place before the fiscal year begins, so.
Okay, all right, yeah, this is just a preliminary budget?
Right, because I remember, I thought there was something about another possible reading in July before the annual meeting. Which is at the end of July, am I, maybe I missed?
No, what, what does happen in July is we'll get another state, we'll get our state aid estimate.
And maybe that's when we reconfigure some numbers, maybe that's what I'm thinking.
But this year, I wouldn't even recommend that, because I don't think their numbers could be as
Yeah, they're a little clueless right now.
helpful. Because they're, they're basing that on every school this quarter and twenty districts proposed budget for this year, not their actual expenses, so ultimately, it'll be based on their actual expenses. So if they underspend their budget or overspend their budget, all of that will factor into how aids get distributed. So. Yeah. So probably in October, we may do another two readings, at least do an update, like, the first board meeting will have our our enrollment counts, and then yours, the only thing we won't have is the final property values and our state aid number.
Got it.
Okay, thanks for clarification.
Yeah.
Okay, looking for a motion to approve the budget, the preliminary budget.
I move to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five preliminary district budget as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five preliminary district budget. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Mister Andre.
Yes.
Mister Gayheart.
Yes.
Eric Gordon.
Yes.
This is Ingersoll.
Yes.
This is Kostak.
Yes.
This is Reckles.
Yes.
Mister Scarrow.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And next we have our C C two delegate report. Eric Gordon.
Can I control this, or?
I can give you this.
Oh, well, okay, let me, let me do this quick, let me
get you in a slide slow mode.
I, I don't have any slides, sorry. Last Tuesday, June eighteenth, they held the the twenty twenty four C C, which stands for Cooperative Education Service Agency, and I think there were seven in the state?
Twelve.
Twelve, there are twelve in the state.
I thought there were thirteen. Are there fifteen? I don't know, maybe I went there as well.
One, two, three.
I'll Google it, you're probably right.
Google it, find out. Anyway, what surprised me was how large our, our C C two is, and you see the counties that are there. It goes from Union Grove all the way to Monroe, east and west, and north and south, to the state, state line up to DeForest. And so, and it says it serves seventy four school districts. Not quite sure if I understand that that means, they asked the unified school districts to have one representative, so I don't know if that was broken up or not. Anyway, I I have the agenda here, and, and reality, the whole, it was called the delegates convention. And if you look at the agenda, it's basically to determine who is going to represent, there are eleven clusters in there. Uh, each cluster, and we're in cluster G.
Okay.
And each cluster has to have a representative on the Board of Control. And I assume the Board of Control really is the, the group that's responsible for uh, what's going on, because they didn't ask for any feedback or give us any input, so. But the one thing that did happen, which I really appreciated, was number three, the guest speaker, Tom McCarthy, who is the
Yeah, overrated. There you go.
Okay, now I can go to the next one. Anyway, I took this picture because I, I like slide shows that don't only show words, that also have a visual, but this, Tom McCarthy, he's the deputy superintendent. And he, uh, he spoke to us, and this is what I found most interesting, if you go to the next slide, he, uh, he said that the strategic plan that D P I has right now is, they're done with new initiatives, which I imagine every administrator in the district, or in Wisconsin is happy with. And they just want to clean up what they're doing now, and make sure everything's working. So the needs to be worked on by the department is, and this has been a problem for quite a while, they recognize that, is just the workforce, there isn't the workforce there in dealing with that crisis. And he says they're moving more to being a consumer service rather than dictating to, to districts on what to do now. That's what he said.
Big conversation.
Yeah, well, and remember, he's deputy.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Anyway, uh, uh, he said one area that they want to concentrate on is to increase special education of funding, which is going to require legislative action. And he also mentioned, he is assuming that with the redistricting of, of Wisconsin, that we're gonna have a number of new legislators next year, and that they're going to have to be informed of the issues that
Yeah.
that the state has and we have, and he's going, he said he's going, they're gonna be asking for people to go to Madison to to push these issues. And so that was basically what he talked about, and then it was open to questions, and of course, the big question by everyone was N P S.
Yeah.
And he said, at this point in time, he can't say what's going to be the amount, he said. Obviously, N P S is going to head to funding reset or correction, once they find out their true numbers. And that means that every other district in Wisconsin is going to get more money.
Interesting.
Yeah. But he couldn't say how much.
Yeah, of course not.
And so, that basically, for me, was the most important part of the whole convention. And the next convention will be June seventeen, seventeenth, twenty twenty five.
Okay. Well, thank you for going to that.
The woman for cluster G, Lisa I'm gonna pronounce it, what, I think she pronounced, how she pronounced, is it Humph, Humphner?
Okay.
Is from Whitewater, and she's finishing her last year of filling out Barb Fisher's term.
Okay.
So she, Barb had finished one year, and then, then Lisa took over, so.
Okay, got it.
Next year, well, at our convention, or at the convention, we'll be looking for someone to pick over.
I would just want to clarify one, one piece, thank you Kyle very much for that, I hope you guys can hear me. But in regards to that N P S funding, that would be related to the state aids, I believe, correct, Bill? And, and really, it doesn't provide districts with more money in their budget, it just provides more monies to offset the local tax levies, correct?
That is correct, Jason, there is also a That is correct, Jason, there is also a legislative fiscal bureau report, one of the legislators requested. With the approved referendum for N P S, how would that affect a school district, so, so the legislators can ask. Likely to do these analysis, so they did that. Uh, and that came out, it was on, I think, channel four or channel twelve, where they had a report, it was showing what that would look like for each school district. Based on the information they had available, which is, it's hypothetical, because there's so many variables, in reality. They won't, you know, if they move forward with their approved referendum, that's twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And state aids won't be, be based on the following year, so you're talking twenty-five, twenty-six, which will be a new state budget.
Yeah.
And how much money are going to state aids? No one knows, so there's a whole, what I'm sharing with you is, there's going to be a whole bunch of variables to that. But I know there are a number of stories that came out based on that analysis of, well, this district's going to lose money, or this district's going to gain money. And there's, no one really knows for sure, uh, because it's way too early to know. So, I don't know if anybody saw that, but I know that was on channel four, I think they did a little report on that, so. That was, but it all tied back to N P S.
Yeah.
And their, and their referendum, so that already impacts everyone else.
Okay. All right, next item is our director's report.
Twelve C C's, I just looked it up.
Oh, it is twelve.
I used to be at C C two before I.
Got it.
Um, well, good evening, I'm Tricia Spende, Director of Online and Blended Learning, and I'd like with me.
I'm Jess Reimy, the Principal of Options Secondary Model.
Yes. So you can.
Do you have any question, or just?
You can.
Is that the first time you've introduced yourself with that title?
Yeah, I was really worried about screwing that up.
Uh, so we're here tonight to bring you some good news, um, we were awarded the one million dollar expansion grant for. Our virtual charter school in grade six through twelve, um, so. This slide's just going to tell you what we'll talk about tonight, I promise it will be very brief. Nice to come with good news, though, um, so, back in October, D P I announced that they had been awarded. Fifty-eight million dollars, which is a lot of money to charter schools, it's a, it was a competitive grant cycle. So that means that only charter schools that were looking to become a new charter school. Or if you were an existing charter school, you could apply for an expansion grant. Only if you were high quality, so there were some parameters that, you know, we had to meet to be high quality, and that was mostly. In terms of our school report cards and things like that, um. I will say that um. From October to June, um, these are a few things that happened, so. December, they had their first informational meeting, so Sarah Stone and I tapped into that. Uh, where you learned about the grant process and how the application worked, there was a technical assistance. Session through D P I in January that we attended, we met with Michael McCabe. To learn more about what our particular charter school might look like in a grant, and if that were something that would. Potentially be funded, what we were looking for, um, so when we decided to go ahead and apply for the grant, that. That was early February, um, then we tapped into Katie James, and she has expertise in grant writing, so we pulled her in, and then there was. About a two-week period where we just kind of locked ourselves in the conference room and produced a hundred and eight-page grant application. Um, so that was submitted, and the way they, again, it's a competitive grant, so even though it's fifty-eight million dollars, you would think. Anybody who would apply would be funded, but it didn't work that way, so, um, there were twenty schools that applied. For either an implementation or an expansion grant, only twelve were awarded, so. You know, sixty percent of the schools that applied.
Yeah.
Received it, um, so we were very fortunate, it was peer reviewed by five, there were five peer reviewers. Extensive reviews, um, lots of good feedback too on our application, um. They throw out the top score and the bottom score, and then your three, the three scores in the middle are averaged, and you have to have an average of thirty-five or higher. To be funded, um, so we fell into that area, just to make sure I don't pick up anything, um. Uh, so why didn't we even apply for this grant, so as an expansion grant and a high quality, we really wanted to take what we were doing that was working well. And expanded across the state, um, what we do well at six twelve is we provide access to dual credit internships, workplace learning experiences. Um, and we really wanted to expand that to students who lived in rural areas and who were experiencing some educational disadvantage. Students who are expelled, students who are homeless, foster care. English learners, um, in a virtual setting, we can provide that. This funding will be five years, we have a planning year, so this coming year will be our planning year. And the grant funds are directly tied to our enrollment goals, so our enrollment goals are to increase our enrollment in grade six, twelve. Um, by twenty percent, and I, I see that happening. Easily, we've already, um, just since January, I know in the four K five. Area, I've met with sixty-seven new students to bring in.
Just for kindergarten?
Uh, four K through five.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, most of them are kindergarten. True, oh, and I know Sarah and now Jess is carrying on it, we have to offset our graduating seniors immediately, because we don't have a new resident. An automatic resident coming in, so all of our enrollments come through, new people coming in.
Yeah.
To the district, I mean, some come from within the district, but replacing those graduating seniors, we really capture from, um, surrounding area.
And how many seniors did we have, because it was eighty?
Thirty-eight graduated.
I was gonna say, it's thirty-eight from specifically from options.
Okay, got it.
And that, that part, right.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, you know, some students just, you know, naturally migrate to the middle school, they've been planning for that, or. They've been through options through A P R, they're planning to go to the high school, so.
Yeah.
You know, we, we lose some that way.
Sure.
But I would say our enrollment is strong for next year, I have a large group already for alternative open enrollment.
Great.
So I, I see that happening easily, um. So Jess is going to tell you how we're going to use the grants.
All right. So first off, um, part of the grants and the vision is, is growing kind of our staff, um. Skill set and knowledge about students, particularly in the at-risk category. Um, so we will be putting some of those funds towards professional development. Um, we're going to attend different conferences that the W R C C S puts on for our state. Specifically, virtual learners and for our at-risk youth in the state of Wisconsin. Um, we need to bolster, if we're going to start having kids come in, especially those from all corners and pockets of Wisconsin, we need to bolster our. Um, technology and transportation, um. Ability and infrastructure, so some of the funds will be to purchase hotspots, laptops and Chromebooks, we do have, um, students. That come from us from rural areas, where internet services is, is still difficult and really tricky or spotty. And so in order for them to have fully accessible learning, um, we do support them with hotspots. Um, additionally, um, our plan is to purchase a vehicle, um, we're still kind of, um, kind, uh, figuring out what. What kind of vehicle would best suit the needs, but everything from, um, our special education staff, being able to find pockets of students to meet up. And work together, if I've got ten kids in Janesville, we can go to them, um, and meet with them, also delivering materials. Um, while also being an, um, moving advertisement, um, for our district.
And A C T, um, administration to, it's difficult to administer A C T and state testing. When they live too far to drive, um, so this allows us to go to them for some tests.
And then advertising and marketing, um, ensuring that we are upgrading our websites, number one goal. Um, mailings and community outreach efforts, we're already looking at the Racine area, the Racine Unified. Board decided to, um, close their online school, I have had, I have had a meeting in the last week and a half, every other day with the Racine Unified. So, um, they're, they're coming.
Yeah.
Um, and we'd like the marketing also to include purchasing of promotional materials, videos, posters, billboards. So that they, it's like, we're here, we built it, no problem. And then, um, finally, one of the other big pillars is an outreach and student success coordinator, and I kind of, um, put in here just a little bit of. So you can understand what this person would be responsible for. Half of their job would really be implementing onboard processing, as we're having students, um, influx coming in from all over. Having those meetings, um, building those core relationships with those families, so they feel like they belong in our school, even though it's a virtual world. Um, and also getting to know them and any specific needs that, that they would have. Um, building relationships with our post-secondary institutions, um, we do have dual credit, we do have professional certifications and start college now. But those processes could absolutely be improved, efficient, um, making it more efficient for families. And we can expand our relationships, um, with different industries throughout the state to really bring, um, more programming and options to our students. Um, managing course and career planning, each student gets a course audit, where they would work with this person. Um, specifically, the students that are not just our apex virtual, but more are students that are taking college. Courses at the same time as trying to graduate high school, would work specifically with those students, um, because as we know, it's not just. Getting your credits, it's becoming a responsible person that is ready for the community, um, and, and. Practicing things like an interview and a cover letter and things like that, that is important. Um, and then finally, wanting to be that advocacy outreach person, where they're going to, oftentimes, it would be with me to different events across the state. Promoting our school, promoting our programming, um, making sure that. We're highlighting what sets us apart, and that's, um. That the board has continued to support free unlimited college credits and associate degree programs, that's unique to us. Um, and so, we just need to put some energy behind, um, that mission and really spread it throughout the state. The funds for this position through the grant are only allowable for our planning year, so we'll get going on. My planning is perfect fit soon.
And. I would say too, that funding, with grant funds, you know, there's always specifics that you can and cannot use the funds for our target population for growth with grade six through twelve, so the. We can only use funds for the things that we identified for the students in grade six through twelve. Um, and you cannot use it except the planning year for any type of salary or staff. And next steps right away, in July, we have a kickoff at D P I, it's a full day nine to four. Uh, where they kind of go through the formalities of receiving this grant, we're required to bring a team, their school leaders, uh, authorizers, governance board. Um, teacher, teachers if, if wanted, um, I would invite any of you, if you were available that day and wanted to attend that. Um, I know Jason and Chris and Jess will be there too. Um. The next thing would be a call, like a, a one-on-one call with D P I, where they talk about any revisions to our budget or anything like that, that need to happen. Um, and then, there's, you know, professional development that we have to attend throughout the year, we attended. In June.
Yes.
We attended the Works, W R C C S, Wisconsin Resource for Charter Schools.
Some different charter schools, some different charter schools, yeah.
So they receive, that's out of C C nine, they receive money from D P I to provide technical assistance to charter schools, so they put on a professional development that we're required. To attend, and we did, we did it in June already, um, from here on out, it will be required, but we just volunteered to.
Great.
June. Um, so that's it, um, do you have any questions?
That's really exciting.
Yeah.
Oh.
Congratulations.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Jason has a question.
Oh, yes.
So, how many virtual charter schools in the past have received a charter school expansion grant in the history of Wisconsin?
I don't know the answer to that, but I did hear that we are not the first.
Oh, we're not the first?
We are not the first, but I can't imagine there have been many.
We were told we are the first, that's why.
Very good question. Then Jerry Cole.
Yes, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Okay, onto the community survey response review.
Copy of the summary. Survey results are in a. Format here, basically the pie charts, um, and I, I know Jason's online, so I, Jason, did you want to go through this, or, um?
Did you mute him?
I don't know. So anyway, as you know, we did a community survey, uh, we sent that out to all box holders in the entire school district. They had the option of completing either online, or they could actually do a paper copy, so we had a number of people that did paper copy, so. If they turned a man a paper copy, then we just entered that data into the Google sheet, so. Um, ultimately, we had about six hundred and, I think, thirty-five or thirty-six responses, which is pretty good for survey response. Um, and, you know, we can kind of walk through each slide, but we had a number of questions, and then we got some demographic data as well, so. The first main question was, was, you know, would you support a reoccurring operational referendum budget? Um, and budget cuts that the Financial Stability Ad-Hoc Committee recommended. And you'll see with the results, about a little over fifty-three percent was yes, thirty-five percent were no, and eleven percent undecided. So, there's probably an air percentage here, or maybe three to five percent, Jason and I were kind of looking at that, so I'm not sure if that's exact, but. Within the survey, there's always that air percentage, so.
Can we drill down into any of these, where, like, take this question here and figure out. How many people in what age category said yes, how many people in what age category said no?
I think it, it would be great, we haven't done it yet.
Okay.
I guess to answer your question.
As somebody who likes to drill down.
Yes, I was thinking the same thing.
Survey questions.
Yeah, and I, I think we certainly can, even, even where people live, what municipality, and how they vote, all of those kind of data, so.
Yeah.
So I don't know, is there any questions or comments on the first question?
I mean, just like that. At, at least it's not opposite of that. How many were sent? Top, and this is a good six hundred question.
Yeah, um. Trying to think here, all the box holders, so.
Jason, do you know?
It's around five thousand.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Four to five thousand?
And we say there are about four thousand eligible voters?
Uh, there, there's more than that.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I went back and looked at the last, like, referendum we had in November. Because you think in November is being a big turnout, and that was two thousand sixteen, and that was eighty-five hundred voters.
Yeah.
It was actually eighty-four seventy-eight. So, but that was two thousand and sixteen, I, I think our most recent, this referendum, was probably closer to five thousand, but that would have been in April.
Right.
So.
Twelve seconds, there was twelve percent of the population responding.
Yeah.
Affirmative, like, so that's, that's a lot of people who didn't answer. So, yeah, it is what it is.
Yeah.
And you can't.
Um, we had a second question, of course, would they approve a dollar amount even higher than what was recommended through the ad hoc committee? Um, maybe you can see the percentages become a little less in terms of those that would support that. And then the undecided would seem a little higher. Um, if the district needed to make cuts, would you be in favor of increasing class sizes, um, that was not a strongly favorable option for. Those that responded, about twenty-six percent said yes, and sixty-five percent said no.
Again, I'd be interested in knowing.
Yep.
Um, age category on this one, because if the sixty-six and up are mostly saying no, you know. Then I'm like, well, you don't have kids at school, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, or can the, the demographic of, you know, do you, there, I think there was a question, do you have students in the school district? How many of those people said yes, and how many of those people said no?
You gonna make a comment, Jason?
Yeah, I was going to mention that I shared with the, the board the spreadsheet of all the open-ended comments, um, it wasn't just the open-ended comments. It was the spreadsheet of the entire report, which, um, you can then sort and decide. You can then sort and disaggregate based on the, the different age ranges in the categories.
Okay.
And then we asked a question about busing or other areas and, and. You know, that I guess received more of a positive response than the class size question. And then the breakdown municipality, which I, I don't think this was a surprise.
Yeah.
You know, the city's the biggest chunk here, almost fifty percent. And I like to say the big three after that, which is the Grange, Chillicothe, Shippensburg. If you're a employee of the district, about fourteen percent were. The age distribution, which was fairly equal, the largest being, I guess, the thirty-six to forty-five.
Which makes sense.
Then the other groups were pretty well represented as well. Beyond the eighteen to twenty-five.
Yeah, a quarter of them were the sixty-six and up.
Yeah, I, I thought we had a, a real good, a, a large participation from the sixty-six and up. And I think when you go back, if you disaggregate that data, it was. Pretty reflective, at least my, my impression was, and I didn't separate into a chart, but pretty reflective of the percentages that you saw on the chart. Which, uh, they've done a lot of studies on that and sometimes people get this impression that sixty-six and over. Aren't dis supportive on schools and referendums and that's actually. Not necessarily true. It's, it's a group that does tend to support schools and school referendums.
And then most that participated were residents. Over ninety-two percent. And if they have children in the school district, that was fairly evenly.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I was a little surprised by that one. Yeah. But also glad to see that.
Right.
Right. It was more than just our school families.
Right.
So that's the summary data, but, but obviously we can do more analysis to get, you know, a little more detail on, yeah.
I think, I think the open-ended comments are valuable, more so to, to help provide some. Guidance in regards to possibly the education component and the concepts that people are still missing. It's. I, I mean, and I don't, I don't know the answer to this and how you help people understand how the state funding formula works and. You know, despite even on the actual survey, we provide the chart and the explanation as to. Why there is a projected shortfall now. It's like, you know, people either don't read that, they don't see it, or they just don't believe it. That's how I would summarize it.
Okay. Um, thank you very much for. Putting that together. Next item is the personnel recommendation sheet.
Quite a bit of personnel. I think the appointments list, there are ten appointments, which include Justin. Courtral would be a new middle school, uh, English teacher. Rebecca Heather would be special ed and social studies teacher for options. Lisa Craybender would be middle school science teacher. Michael Flock would be. The youth build program manager and job developer and special ed teacher at CCA. Timothy Rodigan would be a high school chemistry teacher. Nikki Smith would be a support staff tech. Intern working with the tech department. Joetta Zimmerman would be cook at Westside Elementary School. Megan.
Harnness.
Harnness.
Yes, would be a social worker, working in combination, middle school, high school. Molly Wallace would be science teacher for CCA and Troy Watson would be social studies teacher for CCA. That is all the appointments. Transfers, I believe there's five transfers. Caitlin Bladder would be going to the middle school as a school social worker. Melissa Pfeiffer will be moving to payroll and HR specialist. Jessica Artu would become school psychologist at Westside at Tibbetts. And new Rudy would become the gateway program coordinator teacher at CCA. And then finally for transfer, it would be Melissa Sanchez, who would become the edge program coordinator at CCA. And then I believe we have six resignations. Abby Gordon. Gonzalez, Xander Harkness, Wiley Iverson, Alexandra Cornig. Nicole Lomax and Heather Rudolph. And you certainly want to thank those people for their service this past school year.
Um. Not wanting to create a ton more work for you guys, but, you know, as I was reading through this list today, I thought to myself. I have no idea who these people are. It would be. It would be really nice to be able to have just maybe a one or two sentence kind of synopsis that. Justine is right out of college. She just graduated from so-and-so. You know, something to kind of understand a little bit about who these people are.
What if we hyperlink their resumes?
Sure, you could do that.
That's easier.
Yeah, that's the easiest way. It just would be nice to know a little bit about, you know, like if they're. If they're, um, somebody who, uh, they, they were a teacher for twelve years at Badger and now we got them. You know, like something like that. It's just. I'd like to know a little bit more about who we're hiring.
Yeah, we, we, speaking of that, we did have a. CCA was floored by the, the quality of the applicants that they had in their application pool and so forth and. We, three of the four that they hired to fill those positions were from, are from Badger, but. Well, one day, so I feel for that. I'm sure their superintendent isn't gonna be happy with me, but. Anyway, I, I agree, we can, we can do that and put that together. I think perhaps. From a time standpoint, it would give you even more in-depth is that we could hyperlink the resume. And in the cases where there's some internal transfers and perhaps we don't have the. Resume readily available, like Megan Tama Luna's, we could certainly put a little synopsis in there and give some.
And for transfers, I probably am not looking for their resume, more or less where are they transferring from? Like they're transferring from this school and this position to this school and this position.
Right. Like Megan, technically it's not a transfer because she was the county. Social worker that worked at CCA, but she wasn't our employee, similar to the SRO officer. So she's accepting. The position of the, the middle school, high school in place of Caitlin Bladder. So she will become a district employee that's been with us for years. But I would agree that we can put those together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I'm thinking years ago, we used to have that a little more information.
Yeah.
But there were fewer people too.
Yeah.
But still, we, we put that together.
And I know that's, it's, it's more work on your end, but. It would be helpful to know. Yeah.
Yep, we'll do that.
Thank you. Um. Okay, so I guess we're looking for a motion to approve the personal recommendation sheet.
I'll move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-fourth. Including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening as presented.
Is there a second?
My second.
So I moved in second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district mandated drug screening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, we have some school gifts.
We have, I think two are listed in the notes, but we have a third.
Oh.
Yeah, the first one was from the Elkhorn Elks Lacrosse Club. So they're donating. Three thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and two cents for the high school for the lacrosse program.
Can, can I ask what, like, is it going to the lacrosse program at the high school or is it just in general? What, what was the intent?
Specifically, it's Elkhorn area high school.
This one here.
So I, I believe the intent was for the lacrosse team.
Team, okay. That's kind of where I was trying to. Okay, that makes more sense.
And then we have, let's see, we have the Holton Foundation provided two gifts, one for thousand dollars to the high school and then five hundred. For the middle school for the band fund. They use that for the scholarships and doing some of the bands. And they've done that every year.
Yes.
That's super.
Yeah.
And then, let's see, we got one from, is that the Kettle Marine Land Trust?
Okay.
Same here.
Oh, was that for, that was for the baseball team.
That was for the baseball team, yeah.
Yeah, that was an announcement.
All right, and then, uh. This cut off the press, we received from Sugar Creek Lutheran Church, a check in the amount of ninety-seven thousand dollars. For the middle school pavilion.
Oh, yes, yes, right, yes, yes.
Their donation is actually a hundred thousand dollars, but they, they made a direct payment, I think, for some engineering services, a few thousand dollars, so.
I remember that, that's phenomenal.
So I, they were here earlier.
They did that, yeah, they did a presentation.
But today, there was actual, yeah, so.
That's so cool. Yeah, that is really exciting. We have an extremely generous community. I think we do. All right, and on that note, I move to accept the generous school gifts as presented. Second?
My second.
All right, so I moved in second to accept the generous school gifts as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And if I could, if somebody opposed. If I could sort of plug into the whole, uh, foundation, uh, the summer concert series at Sunset Park. Downtown Elkhorn, Fridays, seven thirty, be there.
Yeah.
This upcoming Friday, weather committee is there, big fireworks. And they have a lot of community involvement, FA involvement, all that kind of stuff. And it's a really, really good time.
It's, it's.
It's free, bring your kids, bring your family. I've got cousins coming from Burlington and.
It's very welcome.
Yeah, it's, it's five Fridays, five or six Fridays. They've already had two. Yeah.
Park at my house.
You can park at my house either.
And walk over, right. And.
Probably the range of our houses, really.
Right, right, range, range day.
I know people.
There we go. Range day is the following Friday, but they have, they go, I think until, like, July twelfth might be their last one. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Um, there are some, there's five or six concerts. They've been asking, where you been living under a rock, man? This is every year. Whatever. And it's right across the street from your wish.
Yeah.
Hello.
I mean, it's like right.
I've got a team ball coach. That's all that's on my mind.
Anyway, moving on, thank you.
High stakes.
Okay, so, uh, I guess we need a. Oh, announcements.
And that's, yeah, the Kettle Marine had a producer with the gifts, but they thanked the baseball team for their help. With their land. It's part of the great gift back at April thirteenth. And then the next board meeting is July eighth. And then our annual meeting will be two weeks following that on the twenty-second.
At the high school.
At the high school auditorium.
Yes.
Yeah, when you're on the stage and the lights are on.
And, and we'll be filling in the meeting. Next week or in the next meeting. No, not at the annual meeting.
Oh, for the next board meeting.
The eighth, yeah.
And then we have a policy meeting.
We do on the fifteenth. We have a policy meeting.
Okay.
At eleven thirty.
Yep.
Eleven thirty-one.
Yep. Okay. Uh, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn to closed session.
I'll move to adjourn to contemplate closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C. Consider the contract of an administrator, professional staff member. The school board will not reconvene in open session.
Is there a second?
My second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn to contemplate closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute nineteen, nineteen point eight five, one C to consider the. Contract of an administrator or professional staff member. The school board will not reconvene in open session. Roll call vote please.
Mr. Andre?
Yes.
Mr. Gayhar?
Yes.
Eric Gordon?
Yes.
Mrs. Angerstall?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Redcliff?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.